Seven o'clock, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Burtlet, Connors, Cook, DuPage, and Kane, please call the roll.
Bob Picaro.
Here.
Steve Callahan.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
Mark Hopkins.
Here.
Julie Kapitakakis.
Here.
George Cozio.
Here.
John Miaso.
Here.
Michelle Sarwas. Mike Weirden.
Here.
We'd like to welcome Steve Callahan with us. This is the first time for the meeting. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You have before you the minutes from the April 7th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by George, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Steve Callahan.
Abstain.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Mark Hopkins.
Yes.
Julie Kapitakakis.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. First item on the agenda is case number 2204, 169 Crystal's Lane. Are the petitioners present? Please come up to the microphone. Raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper article, and the picture of the sign?
Yes.
Aren't those exhibits A, B, and C? Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and then present your case.
My name is Rick Crofton. I live at 169 Crystal Lane in Marlin. I'm here today to ask for a variance from the board for a swimming pool. I've lived in this house with my life partner in the back. She's put a lot of the paperwork together with Devon as well. So that was very important. But I moved in about six years ago into a house that was very needed work, to put it simply. And there was a pool there, a small 15-foot pool. And this year it rotted out, so it didn't hold any water. And so that had to be removed. It was unrepairable. And so the pool is literally located behind my house, but it is on a side yard. But it is behind the house. There's also a raised deck that is attached to the pool, and sits around the pools as well. I don't know if you're familiar with the Sayre, Neiberville Road, over there by Mulder, where the horse farm is at. It's a very unique neighborhood. I like to call it the Estates of the Barren Woods, because it's a very wooded area, and it's a very beautiful area as well. So when people come and visit, they're like, wow, it's not a typical subdivision. We do not have water, so we have a septic system. We don't have curves. We do not have sidewalks there as well. So, and what else? We don't have, and no sewer system as well. We're surrounded by unincorporated property within less than a half a mile around us. It's unincorporated as well. Our house is along a heavily wooded parkway, which is an angled lot. So what we're looking to do is put our pool in the existing area. And since it's nonrepairable, we're looking to put a new pool in there for our family. Again, it's a heavy, it's a very unique lot as well. So because the Sayre Road angles, and there's all kinds of woods, as the pictures will show, oh, there we go, along the side road right there. This is causing me a hardship as well, basically because if I don't have a pool, I have a large hole in my backyard, I'll have a raised deck. And it's going to be very expensive as well to fill all that in and do everything I'll need to do if it's not going to be a pool. And we've exhausted all of our other options as well, because behind our house directly is a new pool that just came out in March, as we found out. We have many trees. I already spoke about how it was a very wooded lot. And you can see that there's brooms behind our house. There's a huge oak tree that's directly behind our house. Right to the left of that tree is our septic system. It's a five-bedroom house, so we have two large septic tanks that are there. And the septic field goes all the way out to our fence that surrounds our neighbors as well. And there was also a drain line. So we've looked at one thing there. We've had Julie out two or three times, and there's, you know, nothing where the pool is now that would, you know, keep us from excavating and putting it there. And so we're looking, and it's a 15-foot pool that was there, and we're looking to just go a little bit bigger into a 15-foot, but have an oval pool as well. So the other thing that we had to do is send out flyers to all the neighbors that are in, that are near us within 250 feet. And I'd like to thank a lot of my neighbors, these are my neighbors that are surrounding me, my house. They showed up today. No one's objected to us actually. There's only six houses on Crystal Lane, and three of us have pools. So, and everybody's got a dog, which is kind of a great neighborhood as well. So we're very proud of our neighborhood. I've made, you know, not a lot of investments in the property itself to make it, you know, presentable, and I think that keeps the value of my property as well. Other than that, that's kind of it, in a nutshell. If there's anything else that we can provide, just let us know, and we're looking for a positive decision from the board.
I was out there Monday night and took a look, but you weren't home, so I didn't go back in the backyard. I could see, because of the angle of the road, and it is heavily wooded right there, so it pretty much shades it. It blocks the view, which probably is part of the reason why normally we wouldn't have it in the side yard, right?
So if you want to go to the next slide? So we, the previous, the original version of the zoning ordinance had the word "required" corner side yard, where pools were prohibited. The word "required" was eliminated when the code was revised in 2012. So when the original pool was built, the place it could not be would be in the area that is hatched. So the pool was built in accordance with the zoning ordinance at the time. Because of the change in 2012 and the removal of the word "required," it's no longer allowed within the green area of the lot. So that word "required" made a huge difference in this case.
But it is an unusual configuration for the lot, the way it comes in at an angle like that.
Eric, I don't know if I would even bought this if I was told when I bought an acre lot. I moved in from Roselle, grew up in Streamwood, and I always used to ride my motorcycle back by the lakes and everything that are across the street from us. And it's actually interesting, because I looked, and I looked at my neighbor's house first before I saw this house. I said, it's too big for just the two of us. We got under 55, so we said, you're of age. We said, we need to move your house for both of us, because we both work from home. So I don't know if I would even bought this house if I would be told that 14,000 square feet of my property, of my private property, that I couldn't touch. That would, that kind of makes it a little bit tougher when you, you know, you go to buy something. I used to live in an association where the flatlines were, you know, I could yell at my neighbors so close. But we absolutely love where we live, and I know all of our neighbors do as well, because they've been there a long time. So yes, it's a, as I said earlier, it's a very unique situation. Even the people across from us on the other side of Neiberville Road, Becky and her husband, they, their house is like two football fields away from us, and they have to look through all those trees. You can see where their house is on this picture here, all the way over here. So, you know, I don't think it's, you know, a negative to where the placement is at. We just don't really have a lot of.
How big is the pool going to be?
Currently, it's a 15-foot round, and we've already purchased it. It's a 15-by-27-foot pool, so just about 12 feet longer.
Okay.
Larger, so I like to, once I stretch out 15 foot, you couldn't even swim in it.
No, you can't.
So, no, it's not going to be, you know, it's not, not my yard is completely fenced as well.
Which direction is the 27-foot?
It's going to, it comes out. It doesn't go in front of the house. It just comes out towards the road, as the picture shows right there. You can't put it the other way as well. You can't turn that oval and go the other way, because this lot used to have tons of trees in it. And if you turn that, there's a, there's a great big tree just to the right where his dot is, and I can't even turn that pool to do it. And I have to reconfigure my entire deck that's up there as well.
So right now, you don't have to do a whole lot to the deck?
No, the guy that was from the Great Escape, that's where we bought the pool, everything we've been put on pool, all he's got to do is just trim a little bit on the side of it, because they own, this pool is a 48-inch, so we got to dig it down to sort of height matches. So, no, he's just got to basically trim. So there's no alterations to the deck.
Did you get any calls from the public about this?
We did not.
As Mike said, I have to agree that this is a really strange lot. The shape is just very useless in some situations. The fact that you can't put the deck or the pool anywhere but that corner, really, because of the septic system. And you do have the assistance, I think, from the wooded lot. It makes it less visible. And part of the pool is tucked behind the house, and sort of grandfathered in because you've had a pool already, so.
In compliance, it's true.
I don't think this is asking for too much.
More housekeeping.
Yes. You're just doing a few enhancements, but for the most part, you're wanting to preserve what you had.
Well, I never had children, so if I did, we have two beautiful grandchildren. That's why.
Just like me.
Any further questions from the board?
Sure. Is it Crystal or Crystal's Lane?
Your street sign.
Your street sign says Crystals, and the plat of survey says Crystals.
And the mortgage says Cristal.
Cristal.
The recorded plat of subdivision has it as Crystals, plural.
Yeah.
So is that going to be an issue?
Has it as Crystal.
Is that going to be a technical issue?
It is a technical.
What does your tax bill usually have?
How'd you make it up?
No, no, what? What is, what is it written, what's written on your tax bill?
That's our deal. We moved in, they got, she pays the taxes, I pay everything else. Off the look, that's a good point. What does it have on our neighbors? What does yours say, please?
Yeah, when I saw, I thought we had a typo on ours. I said, well, I've always heard it called Crystal, but.
When you, when you have to do things like local D and D or do anything online, and you try to put in crystals, it won't work. But well, it's a crystal.
Ah, okay.
It's interesting. It was interesting when I registered my cars, they told me, oh, no, put down DuPage, because that's what we have you as. And really, we're in a hotel.
That's why it's Neiberville Road. It doesn't change the Sayre until you go into DuPage. Right. Any further questions before we open it up to the public? At this point, I shall open up the hearing to the public. Does anyone in the audience have anything to say? Any further discussions or motions?
I would make a motion to pass along to the village trustees to approve, you know, number 22-04, 169 Crystal Lane.
At this point, we have a motion on the floor, so I shall close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Mark Hopkins.
Yes.
Julie Kapitakakis.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
Steve Callahan.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. Okay, you got a unanimous recommendation for approval. Stay in touch with Kim or Christie.
Devon.
Stay in touch with Devon to see when it appears on the village board. Good luck.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it very much.
Old business, new business, proposed rules and procedures discussion.
So I'm assuming you all spent the last month researching rules and procedures for the towns, right?
Yeah.
So I have been looking through many of them, and I, most of them over the towns are very consistent with their wording, but there were a few items that I wanted you to discuss so that we can draft the rules and procedures, taking your input into account. So, the first item I would like to address is the vice chairman. Would you like it to be that the chairman nominates the position? Who would hold the position? And then the, it would be confirmed by the other commissioners? Or does someone on the commission want to be able to make that nomination?
How big of interest do we have here?
So we're not taking nominations now. It's just how do we want to do this going forward? So.
I would say the chairman nominates the person.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
Now, would you like that position, the term, to be, it's declared annually? Or do you want it to continue whatever the vice chairman's term is? So some of you have two-year terms or three-year terms?
Go as long as the term.
The term.
Yeah, as long as the term.
Agree.
Okay. Would you like to set that the official meeting ends no later than 10:00 PM? Or another time if you like? 7:15 works for me.
Yeah.
You don't have too many late.
So in the event that the chairman and the vice chairman are not going to be present, but yet you think we've got a quorum going, right? Then would not the chairman simply appoint a?
Chairman isn't here, and we would just vote among the members that are present, who is going to be acting chair for that?
For that night. Okay, that sounds good.
Sometimes we don't know who's not going to be here until the last minute. Things come up.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is 10 o'clock a good time, or does anyone want a different time?
I like nine.
10 is fine. Well, they rarely would go that late anyway. It would have to be something real controversial. We've had very few go that late, so 10 is fine.
Okay. So there is a section of the meeting that we do not typically have on our agendas that needs to be added going forward, called public comment. It's kind of like the town hall portion of the village board meetings.
Really?
If someone from the public wants to speak, because this is an open meeting, they should be given the opportunity. Now, some towns limit that and say that public comment period could not last longer than 30 minutes, to make sure that doesn't drag out the rest of your agenda.
So it could be a public comment with nothing to do with the case?
Correct. It's a public comment that would happen before we hear any of the cases. If someone wants, has a zoning or planning issue that they want to bring up to the commission, that would be their opportunity to do it. You know that there are cases you review that do not have public hearings. So people do not have the opportunity to speak on those during a public hearing.
And like the village board, there'd be a time limit for each comment?
Yeah. We can set a three, we can set an individual time limit of three minutes.
That's.
Yeah.
And then we can do an overall time limit as well, to make sure your agenda does not typically, some towns have an overall limit of 30 minutes, some do not. But I wanted to give you that option.
We probably should have a limit, especially if they have every topic under the sun, and it has nothing to do with the meeting at hand. Especially if, you know, people are coming here expecting to have the meeting go on, and they don't know that some yahoo is up here complaining about an ice storm that happened in July, you know?
You guys all in agreement with that?
Three minutes and 30.
Three and 30.
3:30.
3:30.
The three and 30 rule, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
How do you feel about allowing the commissioners to have electronic attendance in the event you can't attend, maybe due to a work obligation, sickness? The village board allows it. Some towns allow it, some do not. Some limit it to there could be no more than two members that can do that at a meeting.
Do they have a limit on the number of times per year?
They do not, but if you do allow it, the commissioners that are present can vote whether or not to allow that member to participate.
I don't like that.
Well, if it's being, if it's being overly used, you may actually say no.
Right.
Like if something is. In August, or sometimes in August, when people are taking so many vacations, you had a hard time making a quorum. And if we were going to hold somebody back that's trying to get their business done and get onto the village board, I could kind of see it in that, in that situation. You know, we're trying to serve the petitioner.
Yes.
But otherwise, I'm for people being present. I don't know about y'all.
I like people being present also, but if they have a good excuse, yeah, they can come on Zoom.
All right. So.
I have a comment on that. The village board uses Zoom to allow a member to attend remotely, and I don't see why we can't. I mean, for the most part, what we need is in the packet. Occasionally, you probably would want to drive out and take a look at a site, but that's not mandatory. And I think that with the maps and the highlighting on the maps, that that's pretty adequate in most cases. I'm in favor of Zoom meetings, but I don't think we should allow too many of them. I don't want to, I wouldn't want to see it being abused.
So.
Two, two or three per year per individual, you know, whatever the other people think.
I agree, because you might have.
It's a tool that we have, that we could make it work, and allow that person to be in attendance and partake in the meeting. It works for the village board. Why can't it work for us?
There may be a situation where somebody contracts COVID, and then obviously could not come to the meeting. Or like in George's case with surgery. What if you now go into a rehab center? Somebody takes you to your computer, you could still participate, but you're still not free to leave the rehab center.
So we limit it to in the event of personal illness, disability, employment purposes, or if there's family or some other emergency.
Yeah.
That covers everything.
Yeah, it covers everything, yeah.
And if you want us limit it to a certain number of times per year, that's, it's, these are your rules.
I wouldn't limit it. I mean, you're on Zoom because there's, there's a reason you're going to on Zoom, and if you, five times, three times, whatever, there's a reason you're on Zoom, and I would allow it.
So, most seem to have that no more than two commissioners can use Zoom at a time. Do you, but you, no matter what, you need to have a physical quorum present. So we would need to have five members here.
Oh, three?
That's, that's different.
And that's statute?
That is, that's typically how they do it, so that you make sure that whoever is presenting is, that's voting on it. You have a quorum present. They're seeing everything.
Yes, okay.
Because I liked your idea about if a quorum is needed to allow that person off-site to enable the meeting to take place.
So we can discuss that one with the village attorney to make sure we don't conflict.
So you're saying that the quorum present in the room is kind of what other municipalities are doing, it's not statute?
I, I, none of them state that it's statute, so we can follow up with the village attorney. And if it's not statute, we can say, we can take that line out.
Yeah, yeah. You know, when, when we have to continue a petitioner for lack of a quorum, you know, that's not what we want to do.
No.
No.
Okay.
So are we saying that, all right, so four people can't make it? Two are not going to be Zooming, but two are. So now we got seven.
Yeah.
So are those seven, is that, so we had, are only the five people present going to be able to vote?
No, everyone.
Everyone can vote.
Can vote.
Okay. All right. I was missing that. So if they're Zooming, or calling, or whatever, then they're considered part of the quorum?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the limit of two is reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not so sure about the list of reasons, because then that, you have to fill out a form and tell Mike, you know, what the reason is, and he looks at the list, and...
We would just say that you have to notify the secretary, who is going to be appointed, and probably a staff person from Planning and Development Services. So it would be staff, so someone would just have to call staff, and then we would be keeping track. Okay, we have one person that said they have to call in, that's calling in. Okay, we have someone else that calls in. If there's a third person that wants to call in, we'll have to tell them no. That would be staff's responsibility to track.
I think there should be some type of a rule with quarantine, though, for COVID. I think that should be a separate, you know? Because that is totally uncontrollable. And a lot of times, you're feeling okay during COVID, and you're absolutely able to do a Zoom, hopefully, and I don't know, I don't know that that should count. I mean, that could be, are we saying two times a year?
No, I'm just talking about the two members.
Oh, two members. But maybe an exception with COVID, I guess. I mean, I would assume we would look at that anyways if we had a majority have to quarantine in our, you know, like when it, when it blew up like a couple months ago, when Bartlet was having that huge.
So if we get stuck in the rules by something like that, can't we vote to adjust for that evening anyway, to allow more?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
That's reasonable.
Is there any way to ever be excused for a meeting for a personal reason other than sickness?
Well, you can always be, you can always not attend a meeting.
Okay.
We're not going to track you down, I promise.
Every time.
Like we knew at the last meeting that Michelle was not going to be able to make it. She's got an engagement.
Okay.
We don't say, well, what is it? We, you know.
Right. We just appreciate if you let us know as soon as possible, in case we see the numbers dropping, that we can see if we have a.
Because sometimes they actually start calling us, saying, okay, we have four people that can't make it. We want to make sure there's a quorum. Can you make it?
Okay. So, and we want to be able, so that if we know that we're not going to have a quorum for a certain date, say only four of you can attend, but we had a case scheduled for that date, it was a public hearing. At that meeting, the four members that are present can continue that to a special meeting without having a quorum present. You can continue the case to a special meeting, so we could confirm with you guys what date works.
Sounds good.
So we don't want them to have to wait an entire month and republish.
So it could be continued like to the second Thursday?
Yes.
Or on Monday night, or?
Right. Which we did not have in our rules and procedures before, which is why this would be very helpful.
Yeah. I can remember that happening.
Now, did planning have their, I mean, when, for the planning commission, have rules similar to this? I mean, and zoning, we never had.
Zoning board never had rules or procedures. Planning did. The plan commission did. I do not know if they were ever reviewed in the 20 years I've worked here.
Right. They were largely ignored.
Um, and then I think that covered all of the rules.
Thanks for doing that work.
Yes.
We appreciate that.
So, and the rules are going to have, which we did not have this before. I know you guys have all memorized that in Chapter 13, all of the different kinds of cases you review, it is going to outline which need a majority vote, a simple majority of who's present. There are certain items that need five commissioners to vote in favor of it.
Right.
So even if we have a split vote of three to two.
A handy little section. No, a handy little section in the code that's in a chart would be wonderful.
That is exactly what I'm doing.
Cause previously, with the zoning board, if it was a three-two, it was, it was just called a roll-call vote, because it meant nothing, because you, we had to have a majority, we had to have four.
Right, but there are some things that three to two would count.
Really, wow.
We only have five members, so that's very important for us to know, it would, it changes things.
And that is a statute thing?
It was adopted as part of the chapter thirteen.
Okay.
Administration, so.
So as we go over three items on a night, we would have three separate votes?
Yeah, depending on what the requests are. Typically, the plan commission would typically break out many of their, the motions, so that you could know, people might vote in favor of one part of a case and against a different part. That way, the board can see what all the issues were, you don't want to lump everything together.
Okay, and then as we vote on items one, two, three, do we, will we know what the proper, uh, majority is, what would carry a, 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 a recommendation of vote?
So what we will have in the secretary's minutes, when she's calling the roll at the bottom, we're gonna have a little line that says, okay, this one needs five, this one needs a simple majority, so as soon as you make the motion and do the vote, she'll either say the motion passed, or the motion failed to pass, it's going forward with a vote of three to two.
And we would know that?
We will have a little cheat sheet at the bottom that will be adding to our minutes.
Sweet.
See, we, we couldn't do that before, ours was a take it or leave it, all or nothing, we had to vote up or down on the whole package.
Well, sometimes we'll get, you know, five, the whole package will have five requests in it on the same, from the same petitioner. So sometimes we broke it apart, if it was a clear-cut yes, then sometimes we packaged it all in one vote.
Right, right. Some, and we had things sometimes, if it was just one particular item, we would say, look, we can take a straw poll, we're pretty much opposed to this, the best we could do is give them a continuance till next month, come back with a new presentation, cleaning that one up. But you, but we could never negotiate with them.
Gives them a chance, right, and there is a little bit possible, right, um, on, on certain things, where we can work to their benefit, the village's benefit, and try to come to a resolution. Sometimes a petitioner would just as soon speed forward, even with a partial no, you know, on certain facets, or sometimes they want the yes. You know, when you straw poll them, you're asking them, you want to go forward with a no, you want to take a little time.
Now, with the, the way the commission is now, I am voting also, or just breaking ties?
You vote also.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Any concerns or ideas you have for the rules?
We're still gonna get a shot at your draft, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
A shot.
Come on, you don't.
The operative word there is shot.
Exactly right.
Yeah, I, I will send you a draft for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
We'll have our attorney review it first.
And he'll say, no, what did you do?
Very good, anything else? Is something on the agenda for next month?
I believe we are going to have a side yard variation, and depending on the timing of other projects, we may have something else, but depends on when people resubmit their plans.
And next month will probably be Roberta's last time with us?
It will definitely be, unless she wants to start coming to these for fun.
Oh, they're a good time, yeah.
Are they gonna stay in town, or stay in the area, or are they moving away?
She is moving out of state.
Who's moving? Roberta's moving? Out of state?
Well, Williamsburg, slightly out of state.
I'm sure there's going to be something for her before she leaves?
I would assume. If there's something, we will let you guys know. I know many of you have worked with her for years, so.
Anything else? Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by John, second?
Second.
Second by George, all in favor?
Aye.